I saw it, I saw it from over there.
Ashley, yeah, Ashley, it's really big.
Is it the same people that made this one? I think it looks good, or at least from over there. I haven't walked over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Certainly, councilperson Bear?
Here.
Dupree?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salcedo is absent. Zor?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
And Mayor? Councilman Nichols?
Here.
I have the wrong guide sheet, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to bring you the budget presentation for the upcoming fiscal year 2025-26. This one has began to present a bit of a challenge that was unexpected, which I will go into in a minute here. So for the city taxes, our millage rate this year was rolled back. So per the Hedley Amendment, if our taxable property value within the community increases faster than the rate of inflation, the total property tax revenue does not exceed the previous year's revenue adjusted for inflation. So with this formula, our millage rate rolls back. We have had smaller rollbacks than the previous years, but this year it does equate to almost a full mill. It was unfortunate, it did come very last minute, just last week we learned of this, so we did have to make some last-minute adjustments to the budget that were unanticipated. We pretty much had a balanced budget with a contribution to fund balance going in. Unfortunately, we do not have that now. So what does this mean for our budget? So our taxable value is at 794 million. Our anticipated millage rate was going to be 18.2421. It is now set at 17.2635. So our collectible taxes, rather than being 14.491 million, they're now 13.714. So we do have a decrease of approximately $777,000. Again, the budget was balanced with a slight contribution to fund balance. So once that was learned, we had to make some minor tweaks to the budget, but this budget does call for a use of fund balance for the first time in several years. Does not make me happy. We have had a strong fund balance going, and over the last several years, we've contributed to fund balance. It has started to shrink at the amount that we've contributed to fund balance, but this is the first time that we've gone into it knowing that we would pull from fund balance. There are things that could happen throughout the fiscal year. If expenditures don't come in as high as they anticipated, you know, that would be beneficial for us. But right now, the revenue is projected at 28,761,677, and the appropriations are projected at 29,426,552. So right now, the estimated use of fund balance is $664,875. This is going to cover capital projects for the year. Last year, we had revenue at 27,679,652, actually, the current year that we're in. The appropriation at 27,570, with a contribution to fund balance anticipated. So here's a look back at where we are with our fund balance. So we started this fiscal year at 8.1 million, which is 29%. As you may recall, council did adopt a fund balance policy that we would maintain a 20% fund balance. So what this does is it allows us to maintain enough cash to continue to pay our current operations and cover us for at least a couple of months beyond that. Our projected fund balance at the end of this fiscal year is 8.2 million, or 30%. And we are projecting for this upcoming budget to go down to 26%, which would be 7.633248. Now do keep in mind, there's about 1.6 million of the fund balance that is restricted and cannot be used for general operations. That's under the construction code, so that does have to be maintained in there as well. So if we were to take that out, we actually would be projecting to be at about 23%. There is some good news on the revenue side. The court revenue has significantly increased. We are getting back somewhat to the pre-COVID levels. So that's good. We've been trending up last year and continuing into this year. So we are projecting, we could have probably projected a little bit higher, but I try to remain conservative because we just don't know. We don't want to have a couple of bad months and have the numbers get thrown way off. The building department revenue and code enforcement revenue are anticipated to stay level. There's no significant changes, expect it to revenue sharing as of yet. And tax revenues are, once again, projected lower than the original projections due to the millage rollback. On the expenditure side, you can see there on the first line that expenditures are anticipated to go up 1.8 million over the current year budget. So that is quite a spike. A lot of that is related to operational costs, contractual obligations for labor contracts. We have settled some contracts. We've tried to get our employees back to a, you know, a good level so that we can maintain our current staffing levels. Me and Council have made some good decisions in that aspect. Of course, we weren't expecting this rollback, so that does hurt us. But as long as we are prudent with our expenditures going forward, I think we should be in good shape going forward. The police department is a bit higher, again, due to contractual increases. And some expenses have been moved over from the Drug and Forfeiture Fund into the General Fund. We are starting to see a little bit of a hit on that side as far as our vehicles, not only for the police department, but citywide. We have done a really good job over the last several years of replacing our fleet, but it does come with a lot of cash output. Sometimes it's harder to keep up with the needs that we have and align that with the actual cash that we have. Most of the other departmental increases are pretty insignificant, but those are all related to normal increases for labor contracts, health insurance, those types of things. Both pension plans had contribution increases this year. We did get the state grant almost two years ago now, which is great for the funding level of the pension systems. We knew it would be a few years before we started to see any decrease on the MERS side. We don't really anticipate much of a decrease to the annual contribution going forward. But between the two of them, this year that has gone up about $700,000. One good note is that our retiree healthcare obligations have remained stable. They've actually started to go down a little bit throughout the years as some of the plans have changed. On that note, part of the budget does include a new employee for the Parks and Forestry Division. The city has struggled for several years when we went through very hard financial times. One of the first places that was cut was the Parks Department. So we haven't had anybody dedicated to the parks to maintain them, you know, take care of the equipment and make sure everything's looking good. We have beautiful parks in the community, and we just haven't done a good job as far as maintaining them. We haven't had the staff to do so. So it has been a commitment. It was talked about during the last budget session last year. There has been a desire, so I did include that. We have one full-time and one part-time employee for the Parks Maintenance Program. And these employees would be under the direction of the Parks and Rec Director and oversee the maintenance of all the parks. This will help improve the neighborhood parks and significantly enhance the maintenance, safety, and overall quality of these spaces. This position will focus on the tasks such as the upkeep of the parks' restrooms, managing park improvements, and addressing residents' concerns as they come in. So again, that's part of our long-term planning and trying to maintain our parks in the community. In relation to the General Fund capital, that was another area that has been cut throughout time. We've done a really good job over the last few years of maintaining some capital items in our budget and trying to do some upgrades to our city facilities as we can. As you look around, you can see all of the facilities are in great need of upgrades, and we try to do it to those items that really need to be addressed, life and safety issues, those types of things. So we do have included in the budget. This project, first project, has been talked about for quite a few years now, upgrades to the police department restroom. I'm sure if any of you were to see that, you would understand why. The DPS building is in dire need of a roof replacement. They have leaks going on in the building. We do have a new sign in there for the animal shelter. That is something that we desire to do. It's not necessarily required, but that is something that we do have included in there for now. We have door replacements at the community center. We did scale those back. The original request was to replace quite a few, or all of the doors in the building, but we've scaled that back, and we're going to phase it in over the next several years. And we have, once again, just the same as last year, 50,000 dedicated to park improvements, so that can be used to purchase new equipment. That's what we're using this year for the item that council just approved recently for Ford Park, for the new playground equipment over there. We do have some more furnace and AC replacements that need to be done here in City Hall, and then we are continuing with the sidewalk replacement program at 200,000. Before I move on to the other funds, is there anything in the General Fund that you have questions on or you want to talk about? You can always go back to it as well.
To the Chair?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To the Chair. This is a very basic question, but for people that don't know, we might want to wait till the end. What determines the actual millage rate?
So Bob, do you want to talk about that? No. Short and sweet. This is Bob's bread and butter.
I'm sorry, but many that aren't watching may not understand.
No, absolutely.
Good evening. Part of what the millage rate is, is elected. You were, the cities and the townships in the beginning have a fixed rate that they start with. Cities get 18 mills, villages get nine. Some townships get four, and some townships get one mill.
We get, we do get 20.
Where do we get?
So that's under the Home Rule Act for our community, yep.
And that's where they started, back when they started doing this. And it adjusts, and Hedley does not help us, especially at times like this, because houses are selling for amazing prices. And all those increases get locked into that formula that she's talking about, and I knew it was coming, just didn't know how much it was going to be. And it hit us hard. It's a good thing that, you know, home prices are up and, you know, we're getting revenue from that. But it's a bad thing because Hedley locks that down. And then you have other elected millages. What's police? I don't have this memorized.
That's part of the 18, and it's 3.4591.
And there's a whole bunch of breakdowns in that total. And sometimes communities have extra-voted millages for police and fire. I know Melvindale does. And my city does too. And the library has, I think that's the littlest one, isn't it?
Yes, so they're allowed up to one mill.
And?
But we can reset that one every year, which is nice.
Right, and with their expenses now that are just getting phenomenally high. But we're working through everything we possibly can. But the problem with all of this, again, is Hedley. And Hedley just grabs hold, and it just holds on. And at some point, if it continues like it is, and the market sure looks like it, we just had four sales come in today at a quarter million dollars for brick bungalows each. And so we may have to vote on that to extend the millage. It's not a popular thought, but it happens all the time.
Yeah, so what Bob's referring to is that Hedley override. We have the ability to go back to that 20 mills, so we could ask the voters to approve it, and we would return back to that 20 mills, which would bring in additional revenue for the city for general operation. It's not a popular choice. We have a road bond currently on ours. We may need to look at water and sewer bonds in the future. So we have a lot of obstacles in that respect. But with a homeowner, it benefits them to some degree, so their taxable value may have uncapped, but now they're going to be taxed on that 17.2 rather than the full 20 mills or the 18.2 that it was last year. So they see a slight advantage, but it hurts the communities.
And the uncapping is phenomenal. I haven't seen one this year so far that isn't double of what it was with the previous owner.
I'm looking at a new house at Lincoln Park, and I was very surprised at the pricing.
Oh, yeah, it's stunning. And when you judge the time that I was at the county, I've never seen an increase like we've had in the last two years in Lincoln Park, ever.
And it's been beneficial to us because we did take a lot of large hits during the housing crisis. So our taxable value for the city dropped drastically, and that was when we had to make several budget cuts. So we've slowly climbed back up. The last couple of years have been much better. Begin to plan around that revenue, and then you get hit, so.
Yeah, and we're over what we ever were. At this point, I think we're about 100 million higher than we ever were.
To the Chair, just, I guess, a math clarification based on what, you know, Trey said. People want to understand what the millage number mean. And correct me if I understand it wrong, but is the millage rate the amount they pay per 100,000 dollars?
Per thousand?
Per thousand dollars of their house?
Well, of house or commercial buildings or personal property.
Okay.
Right, so basically their taxable value times the millage rate. But there's all of the other millage rates on there as well, the county ones, you know.
Yeah, schools. And schools are generally the largest. And if you have a principal residence exemption, you're exempted from that. We're seeing a lot of rental houses, so they pay the full hit, which is really good for the schools. They're all happy about it, but.
Yeah, I just don't know if everyone automatically realizes that's the amount they pay per thousand dollars.
Right, and if, and what's the total millage? Like I said, I didn't have.
For the upcoming year, 18, or I'm sorry, 17.2635.
The whole.
Oh, I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, me either.
Usually around 40, I believe, but it could be.
30 plus for PRE. So that's substantial. And the taxable value is holding that, but the uncappings are very difficult for people. We spend pretty much every minute we're here, either on the phone or with people at the counter, trying to explain what happened, because they see this, and then their mortgage company goes, "Oh, you're, you know, $10,000 short."
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Didn't we just pay a fine, though, for something because we didn't do something? When it comes to the Bob's Department there, the assessing? Did we get fined for something, or? No? That's fine. Okay, that's fine. I'm just checking.
No, it's, we're pretty status quo. We still need our part-time person. That's our only.
If I can continue on, though, the court? Are we assisting the court with helping collect the funds? I mean, they're hugely understaffed right now.
So they hire their own staff? We don't have any control over their staffing levels?
I thought they were part of.
We were a funding source for them, but we don't hire, we don't hire their employees. They're completely under their own control, state control. But the police department has done a good job with the traffic enforcement, which directly correlates to the increase in the court revenues.
But if we're not processing 800 tickets a month per city, then, and that doesn't even count, you know, the code enforcement and that we're doing. I mean, so we're not going to get that money.
They definitely increased, so they're doing something right over there. I'm not sure, I haven't heard of any staffing issues. I'm sure they have it. I know they are looking at some increases in their budget for the upcoming year as far as overtime for employees, so maybe that's related to that, because there were some questions on calculations for that. But we don't have any control over how many employees they hire over there.
So who controls the overtime? They do.
They do.
Everything over there is all on their own.
Correct.
Except the money comes here, correct?
Right. We also pay our portion of their expenses. We do process their payroll for them, but again, it's just an operational feature.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I, before we move on to the water and everything else? Pardon me?
I think Lillian had something she wanted to say.
Did you have something for us?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Lisa, when we were talking about the, you had the General Fund capital page up, and it said upgrades to the PD restroom. I thought we did that with ARPA money.
So we did the addition on the building? I'm not aware of it. Was there an additional restroom on the other side, Chief?
Yes, there was, but there were supposed to be three phases of stuff, and.
Oh, it didn't happen?
No.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
And the addition came in a little bit over budget as well, so some of the other items had to be cut back.
Okay. And then I had one more question on the Parks and Rec. The one full-time and part-time employee, when will we post for those?
So the positions will be funded July 1st, so we can post late May.
Okay.
I mean, ideally, I'd rather wait for budget adoption, but for time's sake, it'd be nice. I know there is somebody potentially interested in one of the positions that has some experience. You know, hopefully, that will come through, but we'll have to see.
Very good. Thank you.
So I know I spoke with you, and I spoke with Chief Prince about extra firefighter or two, and Chief Prince has brought to you a plan to take our department from 20 employees to 30 employees in the next 10 years for safety reasons and also for the well-being of our firefighters. And I think Mike should come up and discuss this and let us know his feelings on it. I know you don't think that it's a good idea right now that we should hold off on it. I think that it's something that we should discuss and look at, bringing to fruitation, because when the firehouse isn't staffed and the employees are down to four on a shift, it's not a good thing for not only the residents, but also for the employees there. So I want to have Mike talk on this a little bit.
So what would you like to know? So I've talked to Lisa during budget, and I wanted two firefighters for the next three years. So we discussed that. She didn't say yes or no, which is a good thing. And then I brought it up that we would wait to mid-year to see where we were at. I realize times are a little bit shaky going forward with the new administration and the federal government, and there's no clear where we're headed so far. And I don't know what that means for Lincoln Park. I don't know what that means for Michigan. So I offered that we would, like, look at the mid-year budget to do this. We are short-staffed compared to the other cities around us. We are short-staffed by between six and nine firefighters as compared to Wyandotte, Southgate, and Allen Park. And we do 2,000 more runs more than them than they do. And with us being in the center of all the communities, we go to all their fires, where Southgate only goes to our South District fires. So we go to everybody's fires, and we're, I want to say exposed more, but we are. So there's that that plays into it. The average age in our department is 44.9 years. That's the average age of our guys. And most of the guys, including myself up at the top, we'd already be retired by now. But through cutbacks and stuff, through the city, through, when we went through receivership, or that we're staying longer. So, yeah, I would love new firefighters. I'm telling you that right now.
Can you tell us what happens, like, today when you were down to four on a call?
So today, today and yesterday, they had three car accidents within 20 minutes of each other yesterday, and Allen Park had to come, and Wyandotte had to come, because we couldn't break away. There's nobody else there. Today, we've had three incidents where we had three runs in a row within, like, five minutes, and only two trucks can go to those. So Wyandotte, E-course, and Allen Park were both in our city today, taking care of our work. That's the way I look at it, that they take, they're taking care of our work. Yes, we have mutual aid agreements, but how far are they going to allow that? Because they're short-staffed, just like we are. So somewhere around, I don't want to say a give, there's going to have to be a solution to this. Now, I have stuff in the works that I'm working on through a consolidation plan with other cities to make a bigger department to where we can all use our resources and it'll be one big department. But that doesn't happen overnight. That doesn't solve problems for today. So that's, if there, anybody have any other questions?
I just want to add, if I could, just real quick. When Mike and I had talked at the budget meetings about, we've, we talked about potentially using the SAFER grants. Unfortunately, those have pretty much unfrozen at this current, with the current administration, so.
They're suspended. That'll be part of my, I'll talk about that during my presentation tonight, about what's happening on the federal government level. Because for the last 10 years, I think we've gotten a little over $3 million from the federal for trucks and equipment and air packs and all kinds of stuff. That's gone.
Right, which will come back to impact our General Fund once again.
Yeah, because we need, a fire engine needs to be replaced in the next five years. A ladder needs to be replaced in the next three years. That's $3 million right there, that the feds usually help us out with. Because we're, I want to say we're a low-income community. We have high risk, and they like to fund that stuff. So a lot of stuff is against us right now, so to speak, for not just Lincoln Park, but the whole region. We have $2.2 million in grants out for radios for all the downriver departments that, right now, are suspended. And radios are $8,000 apiece, and we need, I want to say 250 of them. That's a lot of money. And the DCC is trying to help us out, trying to get us some grants, but, you know, that's, somewhere, the world's going to dry up, and it's going to put, the safety of the citizens is going to be at risk over this. So, yeah.
So that kind of answers.
Before, I'd just like to say that I think that it's just imperative that we look at, if it's not right now, at this beginning of this budget, at least in December, we're halfway through, that we look at hiring the firefighters, because, like, not only the residents' safety, but the firefighting staff's safety. It's imperative that we step up now. They've been asking for a very, very long time for the help, and we just can't let it keep going on, and we can't keep depending on other cities when they need their resources, because they are in the same boat. We need to find a way to make this happen. I just can't be more adamant about that. Go ahead, Lillian.
Well, you answered my question with the SAFER grant. I didn't realize that that was federal. Is there anything through the state to look at? Because I know that Governor Rettmer is, she's one of the first responders.
Yes, so. Yes. So for the state, there are some things that they'll help us with. They like when communities conglomerate, conglomerate together and form consortiums or whatever. They give money for that. They just, they just gave $8.2 million to the DCC for, to consolidate all the dispatch centers in, in Downriver area. So there are funds out there to help facilitate that, but that's going to take some time.
You have to get all the cities on board with that.
Yeah, you do. And that's, you know, how do you tax it? You know, does it just come out of the general fund like now and just consolidate? Or do you go out to the citizens and ask for a millage?
To the chair?
Yeah.
I was wondering, how long does it take to onboard new, new firefighters?
About two months. About two months.
Yeah, the Public Safety Division has a lot more steps that they have to go through.
Yeah.
Well, I know for police officers, it's more a lengthier process when you include all the academy time.
Yeah, it usually takes about a month before they're considered manpower, but it all depends on their training before. If they catch on, if the captains or the lieutenants are comfortable with them being on their own.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody, everybody's different. Back when I first started, it took me four shifts. The previous chief, Steve Martin, it took him seven. No rhyme or reason, just who his captain was at the time. We were on opposite sides. So, yeah.
Lisa, could we get an estimate of what it would, what the cost is to have two more firefighters?
So they run approximately, depending, a lot of them come in lateral, but a starting firefighter will be approximately $100,000 plus the, the benefit for the pension system. So that would include the healthcare and those items, but I don't have the pension number off the top of my head.
So at least we're looking at $100,000.
Yeah. Jessica Wong, Uber guy, yeah.
And that was why, when it was discussed last week, it was right after the Henry Rollback News. It was kind of like the perfect story. Mike and I had discussed, okay, let's look at this a few months down the road, see where things are at. I would love to recommend employees for every department.
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
Police Department's gotten employees, GPPS has gotten employees. And it seems like the Fire Department is the one that's always being kind and saying, we'll wait, we'll wait. But now it's gotten critical. I mean, it's the...
They have had, they have, they have had in the past the firefighters under the SAFER grant, right?
Yes. They weren't able to fill those. That was during COVID. It was kind of a weird time. So they weren't able to fill all the positions on that.
Okay.
So, I mean...
So does an inspector count as staffing? Like, does the inspector still do the runs?
So inspector is on overtime. So he's coming off a shift, usually, excuse me, usually coming off a shift to work overtime. That's it.
So you have six inspectors? Are all six of them?
Our shift guys, yeah, that come off.
But they're not all working on the same day?
Right, yeah. So I have, think I have three and, three and three. So they're coming off, off of their shift from suppression to work the inspections.
So when you're doing hiring on the firefighter then, do you require them to have all the paramedic licensing and everything at first?
Yes. And that's, that's the difficulty. Because to have both of those is, it's almost like three and a half years of college to have all that.
But we're not doing runs yet, correct?
Right.
We're not, I'm sorry. I meant to say transporting.
No. That could be something that we look into. I'm gathering numbers on that, but that, let's...
There's a lot of ideas in the fighter, but...
There's a lot of things going on, yeah.
I have nothing else for me.
Anybody else?
I just want to leave that in the forefront. You know, I don't want to forget that. Because we need to figure that out.
I agree.
Let's, let's see, what show, show, the city manager will have a better handle on what revenue's coming in, in mid-year usually. It's hard, it's hard to project. And she, they do a good job, her and Lisa both do, but it...
Absolutely.
You just never know. You just, I mean, right now it's, the times are uncertain for sure.
Yeah, and unfortunately, this is the first budget that's been presented in probably five or six years where there's so many unknowns and things that, you know, now we have to start being more cautious. And not that we weren't before, but now it's, you know, direct impacts where maybe there was some small areas before, you know, this type of, of change to the budget in the 11th hour has, you know, caused some anxiety.
This is about safety and health and welfare. And this is what I think is, is one of the most important aspects that we need to look at.
I would love to have some 20-year-olds, for sure. For sure.
So how many do you have per shift now?
I have 10 per shift. So when no vacations or super Kellys are taken, I, the most I would have was seven to be working. And the least I would have is six. But if you add vacations and time off and stuff like that. Right now, we're down two on one shift because of injuries, from, on the job injuries. And then another one on another shift, we're on the job. The overtime hasn't been too crazy. We're trying, trying to maintain that. Most of the overtime that we have are contractual and through training. Training, I consider that good overtime. I'll, I'll take the hit for that all day long.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
Don't worry, there's more bad news coming. I'll move on to the major and local road funds right now, which don't have really much bad news there. Those have remained pretty, pretty level. So the revenue projections for the major, major road fund is projected at 3.9 million. And the expenditure is at, just under at 3.964 million. The local road fund is 2.2 million in revenue. And the expenditures are a little bit above revenue projections, but there's a healthy fund balance in there to cover that. And we have done a really good job over the last few years with the road funds. We do have 446,000 budgeted for tree trims and removals. That is an increase over the previous year. Additional funds are allocated to the major and local funds for materials to purchase in addition to the cold patch, the permit patch as well. We have a small amount in there now. We are still starting off in baby steps, but we may continue to grow that as we go through the fall, the summer and fall. Capital outlay for Act 51 funds is budgeted at $2,072,110 for the upcoming year. And that's all dedicated to road improvements in addition to the road bond fund. So over the last several years, we have spent just over nearly 12 million, so $11,655,000 in road projects. So that includes concrete sectioning, asphalt repaving, all of those items that we've been working on for all the road in relation, in addition, I'm sorry, to the road bond fund. So we combine the Act 51 funds with the road bond fund and we spend generally about 4.5 million per year over the last several years on road projects. So while we have many, many road issues, we have invested quite a bit of money into them. It's just very hard to see the progress when there's so many roads that need to be repaired. So the Water and Sewer Fund, we are currently operating under a deficit reduction plan for this fund. If you recall back in, I believe it was February, I brought to you a plan that was required to be submitted to the state. On this part of that plan, we were required to raise the rates for the Water and Sewer Fund of at least 10%. And that would cover general maintenance and operations. GLW, WA raised the rates, DUA raised the rates. Water loss has continued to plague the fund. That does add to the, the rate adjustments as well. So the, the rates are calculated using the requirements of GLWA for our volumes of units purchased from them. And we then determine how many units we sell back to the residents. And since we purchase more units of water than we sell to our customers, the difference is what equates to our water loss, which continues to be 40%. We have not seen any improvement to date. Because we pay for these units purchased and sell less, the rates are ultimately higher, unfortunately. If we can get our water loss under control somehow, I know we've been, it's like a broken record. We've been talking about it for years. We're doing a lot of infrastructure improvements. At some point, it has got to start to trickle down. We have had discussions about replacing our water meters, so we'll be bringing forth some information on that very soon as well. So rates must cover all the associated costs of the fund, which do include employee costs, insurance and other administrative costs, the maintenance costs for the system, repairs, supplies, and capital items.
Lisa?
Yes?
Our employees that we hired to find the water loss, how many hours are they out looking for water loss?
So they're supposed to be dedicated to it full-time. They do sometimes get pulled off for water main breaks.
And so they're out, like they come in and they go out looking for water loss?
Right. They hook up their equipment and look for the leaks in the system. They have found some leaks. Nothing significant. I did ask for an update on, on where they're at with things. I haven't received that yet, but as soon as I get it, I will forward it on the council. But yeah, no significant, we were really hopeful that there would be something that would really pop out and help us say, aha, that's part of the issue. But so far to date, they have not.
So not even like a 2% find or just, we're still...
They've all, they've all been minor, minor leaks. We probably have something out there that they just haven't come across yet. There's got to be something...
And all the water coming in is on, is metered in?
Right. We have our... Yes, yes, they have.
Because it just seems like it's been...
The master meter, yep.
It's been months and months of them looking for water now, loss. And I can't believe they haven't even found, changed that by one or 2%. But it's just, it's kind of bad.
Part, you know, we, we did have kind of a streak of no water main breaks or very few for a few, for about a month or so. And then the last couple of days, we've been hammered with them again. Yeah, so... So for the Water and Sewer Fund, the revenue projection is $17,078. Depending on what council ultimately decides to do with the rates. Right now, the appropriations are estimated at 16.52. That gives a little bit of a cushion in there. That would cover some of those items that come up last minute, such as the, the issue we had on Emmens this past week. So those types of things have a little bit of cushion. So currently, the rates are set at a total of just over 13. The proposed rates would be the 15.2521 in order to, with the budget request that we have in there currently. So the current, current rates, I did a mock bill here on the right side so you could see what that would be. This one does have the rubbish and recycling in it, which I'll go into in a few. So the current rates would call for, this is based on 25 units of water, 378, 27. The proposed rates, which, which are at 17%, would bring the bill to 437, 24. So that would be an increase of approximately 58, 98.
Lisa, you said this is...
Per resident?
This is...
Per quarter. Per quarter, per resident.
And this is based on, on 25 units used?
Yes.
Is it the average, I think?
It was the average we came up with quite a few years ago, based on the American Waterworks Association for an average family of four. Obviously, different people use water different ways. It could be higher, it could be lower. A family of four may only use 15 units, or they may use 35.
Yeah, I don't want to scare people, but if they look at their water bill, they'll see what, you know, like how many units they're using. I know I'm nowhere near 25, so...
But I, I know that number is shocking, so I did run some alternate scenarios. If you recall, a few years back, Aunt Marianne had the group that came in and did a study for us on our water rates. At that time, they recommended an increase of 25%. Council ultimately approved a 10% increase that October. So the 25% would have been very impactful to both the residents on the negative side. They would not have liked that, but it would have helped the fund quite substantially as well. So here, you can see with the 17% increase, what the total revenue generation would be, 15.8 million. If we did a 10% increase, that would lower our revenue by about $949,000. 12% by $697,000. And 15% would be $292,000 less in revenue collection. And then below that, you can see I did what the increase would be on the bill, not including the rubbish and recycling. It's a very hard decision because it does impact the residents who, a lot of them already have trouble paying their bill. But at the end of the day, we have to, we have a lot of needs within the fund. There's nothing, the capital was cut back because we do have some grants that we're still working through. So we did trim back the capital request for the year. So it's a pretty straightforward budget in there. It does include, and just keep in mind too, this is based on the estimated volumes that we sell. So GLWA tells us how many we're required to purchase under our contract from them. And then we have to base our budget based on how many we're going to sell back to the customer. So... So that's how the, the rates are calculated. So we have a little bit of time to decide ultimately. My recommendation would be at least the 12%. 17% would, would keep us in a good position. I don't even really like the 12%, 15 or 17%. I know it's not a very popular recommendation, but that is what the fund needs to keep going and to keep us... We do also have to file a deficit elimination plan with the state every, every year until we have the deficit eliminated completely. Ideally, well, the budget will be adopted June, the first meeting in June. So... We could, we could have another meeting to discuss it because I know we're getting low on time tonight.
And we're committed to the 10% because we put that in the deficit report, right?
Yeah. We'd really have to have a good explanation as to why we wouldn't. But we would have to make some drastic cuts to the budget in order to only do a 10% increase of $1 million. And we really do need to have some cushion in there for the constant repairs that we're coming across. So as we find, you know, sewers that, it's a life and safety issue and we have to get them repaired right away. We have to be able to fund those.
Certainly not going to get any better.
No. So speaking of fees, we'll talk about the sanitation fund. We are under the new contract, so we have slight increases in our, our fees with priority every September. So the revenue projection for the upcoming year is set at 3.2 million and the appropriations at 3.3 million. The current rubbish fee is 36.57. We are proposing 38.60. The recycling fee is currently set at 16.27 and it's being proposed at 17.34. So this would equate to $3.10 per quarter, $12.40 annual increase for residents. I did offset some of the increase with, there was a little bit of, there was some fund balance there, not, not much. We've tried to keep a little bit of cushion in there as well. It's estimated to be at about 5%, which is okay in that type of a fund. We just want to make sure we have cash going forward to keep operations going. So right now, I have $78,000 coming out of fund balance to offset some, some of the increase in fees. Just to talk about a few of the other small funds. Our cable fund is funded through the fees, the franchise fees on the cable bills. Those have gone down throughout the years because more people are cutting the cord. So revenue is projected in the cable fund at 98,000, appropriations at 97,000. The drug and forfeiture is balanced at 120,000 even for revenue and expenditures. We will watch that fund as well to make sure the revenues are coming in as exp... We will watch that fund as well to make sure the revenues are coming in as expected. If not, those, some of those expenses would have to be pushed over to the general fund. The fleet fund has $1,66,500 in revenue and $1.9 million in appropriations. That's another fund we're starting to watch closely because we do have many vehicles that need to be replaced, but it's starting to hurt that fund as well. So we're still okay in that fund, but going forward, we may have to go back to financing some of our vehicles. We've started to use enterprise more and more, which helps keep some of the cash in the fund. But some of our bigger ticket items that we've paid cash for, we're now starting to look at financing again, just to keep the cash flow in that fund. And then the information technology fund is balanced at $304,488. So that is the end of the presentation. Does council have anything they want to discuss? Do we want to talk about the water and sewer rates? Need further? Any consensus on which direction?
This is the next meeting. Which way we want to go?
Yep.
I know it's going to be hard, but I'm thinking the 15.
Actually, I have a question. How do you, how do we think that's going to increase with people not paying bills and outstanding balances if we increase it to 15? Are we going to have an issue where we're not getting the revenue in because?
Well, that is a problem that we, that we do have. We do collect the revenue eventually. It's just, you know, we, we have a lot of payment plans out there, so we're deferring some of the cash with that, but we try to work with the residents as much as we can. The ones who don't pay, we have the shut-offs in the summer, forces a lot of the hands. There's a lot of programs out there that do help though, fortunately. There's the RAP program. Some of them have started to go away now since COVID's over, but there are opportunities out there that where we do get some money coming in. But there's an ordinance where we do roll over to the taxes every year.
Okay.
But you're delaying the cash.
Right, that's, that's what I'm worried about.
And the bills are still paid, right?
Yep.
And to the chair, I know how the water meters are also very top of my mind because I'm sure everyone gets calls about those almost every week.
Yeah, and the problem has just continued to grow with those.
The longer we wait, the more that they go bad, right?
Yes.
To the chair, there are a few programs too in our community through the church, mainly the Catholic church, that they will help you with your water, water only, nothing, you know, rubbish and all that people pay for. But they will help you and then RAP will too, but it's for the water only. It's not for anything else.
Okay, okay, yeah. If we can get that information, we have a list that we give to residents, especially this time of year, the water office gets very busy. So we try to give them a list of places they can reach out to, to get help.
Do you have anything else? And I'm going to close this. I'm going to get, I'm going to have that. And as you know, for this discussion, the study session will be adjourned at 6:53. A clerk, want to call the world?
No.
No? Okay.